Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Today is October 15th. Please stand and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, we will go to some brief comments from the board.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. So I was very fortunate. About once a year, I go into Sue Brumer's class at the high school, and she teaches a policy class, and they're seniors. She's a phenomenal teacher. And they asked me to come in and to talk about policy, what we do on the Board of Ed. And I do that for about six or seven minutes, but then I really want to listen because kids are barometers of their time, and I really want to listen to what they have to say. They're seniors, they've been through the school district, they're young adults. And it's just a phenomenal experience to listen to kids because I don't think we listen to them enough. So I just want to congratulate Sue on the work she does every year and that experience that I get to have every year.
Thank you. I just have a couple of brief things. You know, we were all at the football games, our home games, last month, and it's always a fun kickoff so that we know the year has started and it's going to race by because it's almost Halloween already. We went to the first PTA council meeting of the year, and as I have said and always said, Jessica, our PTA council is the best PTA council around, the hardest working. Lastly, I'll just mention very briefly that I was a delegate for the NISBA annual meeting convention. We were voting on resolutions proposed by various school districts. And although we did not have any recommendation, it is always important for us to keep abreast of the concerns that affect other districts, just to support our schools or really to see what's happening that might be of benefit to us. So I happily kind of did that. Thank you. Any other brief comments?
I'll just add one thing. Two weeks ago, I attended a Westchester-Putnam School Board Association dinner where we train and spoke to board members, officers at various districts across Westchester-Putnam County, new vice presidents, new presidents. And it was sort of a panel where we got to share some of our feedback with some of the newly elected board members who are going to be in the role of president or vice president. And it was at Putnam Southern BOSI's. And as part of the dinner, the kids prepared the meal for us. And one of the kids in the kitchen was one of our own students here at White Plains High School. And she is studying to be a pastry chef, and she's a senior this year, and she's looking to go on to CIA, the Culinary Institute of America, to continue her studies. But what is really cool about the experience is that we're putting on the wing over here at the high school, and hopefully that will be able to give our students an opportunity to do culinary art, to do HVAC, to do some of these career and technical jobs that are highly needed. And she was excited about that prospect, although she wouldn't be taking advantage of it. But it's going to be a great opportunity, especially for our kids who are, you know, on campus and can't necessarily take the bus to BOSI's. I think our enrollment there is about 75, but when we bring it on campus, we could offer more. We'll do it in conjunction with BOSI's, with their instructors. Thank you, Cheryl. Yep, that's true. Thank you. Yep. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So next is our school.
Next is School Board Recognition Week is this week. And of course, we are grateful for the Board of Education's leadership commitment and dedication to our students and our community. And we do have folks here this evening as well to share some thoughts with the Board of Education. I should also welcome, I think this evening is Church Street Elementary School's Representation Night this evening as well. So welcome. And I think, who else do we have speaking this evening? I know Mr. Martinez, I know Miss Stein. Okay, great. Okay, great. Do you want to come to the podium? Thank you. So that Mr. Shepherd and everybody at home can hear. Thanks, Jen.
Good evening. On behalf of the WPTA and CSCA, I'd like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to each and every board member. Your dedication, time, and tireless efforts play a vital role in making our White Plains schools a place where learning and growth thrive. During this National Board Recognition Week, we want to celebrate your unwavering commitment to our students, staff, and community. Your leadership ensures that our schools remain a nurturing environment for students to explore their potential, for teachers to inspire, and for staff to support the entire educational experience. It's through your vision and guidance that we can continue to create a space where every student feels valued, safe, and seen. We appreciate the late nights, the challenging decisions, and the countless hours you devote behind the scenes to keep our schools running smoothly. Your work often goes unseen, but it is always felt by the entire White Plains community. Thank you for your dedication and for the positive impact you make every day. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Martinez, and I'm the proud principal of White Plains High School. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Douglas Kronk, our ASA president. So good evening. It is my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the White Plains Administrators and Supervisors Association to express our appreciation for the members of our Board of Education, past and present, during this School Board Recognition Week. Our school board is responsible for setting the direction of our school district as expressed in our mission and vision and of providing the support in terms of resources and advocacy to make sure that we live up to those lofty goals. While some of this hard work is done in public, such as monthly board meetings, school events, and visits, and other forums, so much more happens behind the scenes that take tremendous amount of time and talent. This is an exciting time for White Plains schools with big plans in action and on the horizon. During such moments, their steadfast support and their dependable leadership are invaluable. So again, on behalf of the White Plains Administrators and Supervisors Association, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Both of you, thank you very much. I would also like to... Oh, yes. I have the certificates. We're going to get yours, too. Next on the agenda, if it's okay, President Eller, I'd like to welcome Mr. Jeremy Harrison to give again another update on safety and security, emergency management plan after SED decided to change it again. Thanks, Jeremy.
You guys, everybody can hear me all right? So normally, I'm not here again now, but SED normally makes changes to the district's safety plans requirement in February going into March, and then we change everything we need to change, and then we're good to go. And we're always way... We're usually three months ahead of schedule when it comes to deadlines. SED changed everything in March and then had some updates in April, and then made changes July 17th, and then July 31st, and then a few last week. So the few last week don't affect our district-wide safety plan. However, the ones over the summer do affect our district-wide safety plan. They are not major changes, and they aren't changes that really affect us as a district. So the big change they asked everyone to make, and it's because it's a statewide mandate, it doesn't really pertain to us because we don't conduct the types of drills and have the types of protocols in place that some other schools met. The big change that I want everybody to be aware of was that they asked us to write an emergency protocol and drill protocol in case we ever decided to do a mass drill, meaning a district-wide drill, including all of our buildings in one drill with actors, props, and bringing in all our first responders, the police, CMS, fire. We had to write a protocol that covered all of the issues that they documented were issues for schools that did do that. I want to assure everybody, we are not going to conduct that drill. It is not in line with the trauma-informed drilling that we do in district, and it's not in line with the trauma-informed drilling that SED wants schools to follow. However, schools have the option to conduct that drill. We will not conduct that drill. We will never conduct that drill. That's not anything, conversations with the police, conversations with educators, and research studies done by the FBI and Secret Service have shown that there is no benefit by having us drill together in those types of scenarios. So I want everyone to be rest assured that the police and fire do drill in our buildings when no one else is here. Dr. Ricker and the board have been great about allowing our first responding partners access to our facilities so that they can train after hours, weekends, and holidays, and that happens all the time. So the drilling and the training is being done on their side. We drill and train just about every day here in district. Throughout the year, between live activations and drills, we run through our emergency protocols over 200 times a year in district. So we're getting the practice, the first responders are getting the practice. We're never going to do that big drill together. One other thing I wanted to add that's written into our emergency protocols is SED mandates that if you are going to do this mass type of drilling, that students should have the availability, parents for the students should have the availability to opt students out of that kind of drill. So there has been some confusion where we've gotten some feedback from parents saying, "Hey, great, I can opt my child out of drills. This is what I want to opt out of drills." The opt-out is only for that mass drill. That opt-out is not for the mandated drills that SED requires us to go through during the school year. So there is no opt-out unless we do a mass drill. We're not doing the mass drill. We wrote the protocol for the district-wide safety plan. In case we do that drill, we're never going to do that drill. So I just want you guys to know where we are with the district-wide emergency plan. We rewrote it, we posted it, we got the comments we got back, we made any changes we felt we needed to make. We're in full compliance with SED. So the hope is that we can adopt it tonight, and then we will do what we have to do in terms of getting it to SED, the state police, White Plains Police Department. Also, just so you guys are clear, the building emergency plans, which are the confidential plans, nothing was changed on those in the SED updates. So the confidential plans, the building plans, they were written, done, completed. They've been loaded into the SED portal, they've been given to the state police, they've been turned over to the White Plains City Police Department in July. Okay? Any questions about the district-wide safety plan and any of the SED updates? We hope that next year, they do what they used to do and just give us a bunch of craziness early in the winters, late in the winter, early in the spring, and we can go with it. But we'll make it. Any questions? Nope? All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And just again, thanks to Mr. Harrison, but thanks to really everybody who's part of the district-wide safety and security team, as well as our building-level teams. I mean, as teachers, this is something that breaks our heart that we even have to think about. However, we are grateful to be able to have the support of the liaison and Altaris because that allowed us to, just like we have in the past, build long-range continuous improvement plans to not only be able to integrate requirements at the state level that are brought to us from the state or even federal level, but also allow us to look for opportunities for innovations to be able to provide additional supports for our children's environments that may not necessarily even be visible. But the constant vigilance and awareness and commitment to keeping everybody safe is greatly appreciated. Thank you, Jeremy. You ready? So we have the real privilege this evening also of recognizing and thanking both Mr. Ricky and Mrs. Lovich for the many years of service to the White Plains City School District community on the Board of Education, but also in so many other ways, whether it be PTA, PTA Council, whether it be being involved on citywide committees such as the Recreation Department, you name it. Over the course of the years, both Rose and Jim were integrally involved in the White Plains City School District and the experience of our children as parents, as community members, as volunteers. And those volunteer roles vary. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mrs. Lovich served from 2012 to 2000... No. Yeah, 2012 to 2024. Is that sound right? In 2009, Mr. Ricky, 2024. So a great deal of service, many, many late nights, many trade-offs from, "Am I going to miss my child's athletic contest or performance in order to be at a Board of Education meeting?" Or maybe I'm just even reading at a family read night, or doing math at a math night, or sitting in policy committee meeting and going through policy, draft policy. All of those things and so many more, we're really grateful for both of you. And so the Board of Education has a token gift for you. But before we give them to you, I know President Eller also, we're serving for so many years together.
So good evening. Hi, Jim, and hi, Rose especially. Just on behalf of the Board of Education, I know, you know, we've said thanks and how much we appreciate you. I just want to underscore that your service, you know, in your professions, you taught us a lot. We learned from you, and that made us better board members. And in, you know, some cases with the finance stuff, Jim, I was more informed when I went to the bank. But in all seriousness, thank you for the dedication. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the long nights. Thank you for when we agonize over decisions. This is not easy, and you did it with such class and grace, and you will forever be in our hearts. And just thank you for everything.
So it's my last chance at the mic. I just want to, again, thank you so much. Thank you to the community for placing the trust in me to be a board member, certainly the fellow board members who do this. And John out back, who's on the video for 15 years, so nobody gets to see John, but we saw John every month for 15 years. So John, it's great to see you again. And I just encourage people to get involved. We all have to do something. Some people are coaches, some people do scouts, some people... We were fortunate enough to do this, and I'm really grateful for that opportunity, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the board. It was an amazing 12 years. We've always said that being on this board in particular is like coming to meetings and just visiting with family. And we considered all of your kids, our kids. And it was just wonderful to watch all of them grow and to help in any way that we possibly could. And as I said a few months ago, when I stood here, if there is a child who was ever in need, I will be there for them, whether I'm wearing a board hat or not, whether I'm working as an advocate or an attorney. I'm not running away that fast. And I just want all of you to know that if there's ever, you know, any reason to reach out, I can easily be found. And again, thank you to all of you.
We did not attach the rockers to these rocking chairs because we know that you're not rocking yet. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Ms. Melendez. Thank you very much for organizing, ordering, and getting everything together. Very nice. Dr. Karatash, would you like to introduce our guests? Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to introduce Chris Angada, partner with Naraki Smith. Chris and his team were out over the summer conducting the year-end audit for the school district, and they're here to present the results of operations for the year ending June 30th, 2024. And I'm going to invite Chris to come up, and he has a little page statement that you saw in your packet that he'll review with you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for coming out.
And I'd also like to truly thank the business office team. They did an amazing job this summer. And as Crystal mentioned, it was a good audit, and it was successful.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. To the Board of Education. Anne mentioned, I am Christopher Angada, partner of the firm Naraki Smith. My firm was retained by the district to perform an audit of the district's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2024. In addition, we also performed a single audit of the federal award programs administered by the district, as well as an audit of the extra classroom activity funds. As part of our audit, we do contemplate issuing a management letter presenting any findings or recommendations on improving the accounting procedures and internal controls of the district. I always like to take a moment just to talk about the conduct of the audit or what I like to call audit readiness and responsiveness. I like to commend the district on a timely and accurate closing of its books and records. This year, we are... Fieldwork commenced in the middle of August, so within 45 days after the district's fiscal year end, the books and records of the district were closed and ready for audit with no adjustments, which is truly a spectacular feat. And in that regard, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Karatash, as well as her entire team in the business office, for the excellent cooperation that we received throughout the course of the audit. The district did file its annual financial statements by the requisite deadline, which is tonight. And we did meet with the Audit Committee, which is a requirement of the New York State Education Department last week to go through these financial statements in detail. All of the board members do have a copy of the final financial statements. I will provide some highlights and overview of the financial statements. With respect to the general fund, the general fund operated positively this year and as well as all the governmental funds of the district. The general fund budget or operations operated positively in connection with the overall budget as adopted by the district. The general fund fund balance amounts were all within reasonable limits, including the New York State statutory limit. So the district is required to be within 4% of its annual subsequent year budget. The district met that requirement once again this year. In terms of some of the long-term assets and liabilities of the district, those are the largest numbers on the district's balance sheet from a district-wide perspective. Capital assets this year, netted depreciation totaled about $182.9 million. That's all the capital of projects and outlay of the district over the years. Bonds payable totaled $41.9 million. Their current year principal payments this year are about $8.1 million. The energy performance contract, which is another debt service mechanism of the district, totaled about $1.8 million with current year principal payment of $833,000. The largest liability on the district-wide financial statements is that of the other post-employment benefits liability. This is with respect to retiree health benefits, totaled about $396.5 million with a current year increase of about $13.1 million. There is no mechanism in New York State for the district to fund this liability. It is required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. The other liabilities with respect to the teacher's retirement system and the employee retirement system, those liabilities totaled about $13.2 million this year, comparison to $21.1 million, really just due to the underfunded status of the plans with respect to the TRS and ERX plans. As I also mentioned, we do contemplate issuing a management letter presenting any findings or recommendations. I am happy to report to the board this evening that we did not cite the district for any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. As a result of this year's audit, as well as this year's single audit, we did not have any compliance findings, question costs, or recommendations. That concludes my prepared comments for this evening, but I'd be happy to address any questions the board has. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tye.
I'm just going to add, Chris, you presented to the Audit and Finance Committee last week, and I just want to say it's a massive undertaking, right? At 250... What are we at? 250 million? 290 million? $190 million budget. To have all the compliance findings and everything in order, the current prior year recommendations were fully implemented. I'm just appreciative to Anne and your department for delivering an amazing budget. So thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Anne, as well.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Ann, as well.
Thank you, Ann.
Safe home. May I continue with Super Ten?
Yes.
Thank you so much, and it is a great pleasure to now welcome our, our colleagues, our Board of, our Student Board of Education members, and thank you so much again for being here with us this evening, and also for your report. And they do have to leave following the report. Lot of homework.
Good evening, everyone. All the elementary schools have embraced the start of the new school year with engaging activities that foster community spirit and connection among students, families, and staff. Each school hosted back-to-school events such as picnics and carnivals, which allowed families to bond while enjoying activities together. Additionally, all schools recognized and celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month through assemblies or interactive activities, helping students learn about significant figures and cultural traditions. Community involvement was a common theme, with the PTA's act, active roles in funding events and promoting inclusivity. Furthermore, many schools are focusing on character education, encouraging traits like kindness, patience, and safety throughout the month of October. At MAS, the campus was enlivened with beautifully decorated sidewalks promoting positivity to begin their school year. They held an annual family and staff picnic to strengthen connections and introduce the concept of student safety patrol officers to emphasize community responsibility. MAS also actively involved students in learning about Hispanic Heritage Month through interactive bulletin boards. Post-Road Elementary School kicked off the year with a back-to-school picnic in mid-September, followed by participation in the district's walk slash bike-to-school event. Their PTA sponsored an annual fiesta, featuring arts, crafts, and cultural foods, along with performances from the White Plains High School Mariachi Band and Zumba Sessions. The month concluded with a student-led Hispanic Heritage Assembly highlighting student involvement and leadership. Church Street Elementary School highlighted its appreciation for parent involvement during open house and conferences, reinforcing the partnership in ensuring student success. Church Street would also like to congratulate their PTA for receiving the Early Bird Award for membership. The school's focus on personal growth through monthly themes is complemented by vibrant assemblies celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, including a parade of flags with appearances of influential people like Celia Cruz and Frida Kahlo, as well as interactive festivities. Discussions on being upstanders in community service are key elements of their October activities, culminating in a commitment to Unity Day. Excitingly, Church Street's garden is ready for harvest, and students will help gather vegetables for the upcoming harvest market on October the 25th, with all proceeds going to a local charity. George Washington Elementary School showcased significant facility upgrades, such as improved bathrooms and brighter lunch tables, enhancing the student experience whilst highlighting the beautiful Journey to Success mural. The arrival of new desks and chairs transformed classrooms into modern learning environments. The school expressed gratitude to various departments like the faculty's office, their food and nutrition department, and purchasing. Their efforts in creating a beautiful atmosphere for students and staff. Ridgeway Elementary School hosted a successful Dad's Day event in partnership with the White Plains Youth Bureau, emphasizing family engagement. The school, the school also organized a large back-to-school carnival that attracted over 500 attendees. Filled with fun activities and entertainment, Ridgeway participated in the district's walk slash bike-to-school day, demonstrating strong community involvement and enthusiasm for healthy transportation options. They are also eager to join in on Unity Day, further promoting inclusivity within the community. Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd, is there a way to turn up the microphone at all? Is that possible? Yeah. It does?
We can't hear it here.
Folks at home are hearing it okay, but the folks up front are having a hard time.
How's it going? It wasn't.
You gotta talk right into it. Thank you. For the middle schools, Eastview had a successful start to their school year, practicing transition activities to acclimate the sixth graders into a new environment and bringing the five elementary schools together. Their motto this year is "Doing the Simple Things Right," putting an emphasis on keeping a steady pace to facilitate a calm and clear understanding of how middle school takes on a more independent mindset and approach in comparison to elementary school. After the success of the transition period, students were able to celebrate through the annual Fall Tiger Fest on September 26th, where students participated in social studies escape rooms, project adventure teamwork activities, circle community meeting drawings, and board games. Additionally, Eastview had also held a Dad's and Special Someone Take Your Child to School Day sponsored by the Youth Bureau, as well as a walk, bike, and roll event through the PTA. Lastly, there has been an approximately 10 after-school clubs up and running with all meeting their capacities. In Highlands, they had an unforgettable Field Day on September 20th, where students connected with teamwork to participate in a variety of activities such as Capture the Flag, School Trivia Kahoot, and obstacle courses. These engaging activities allowed for students to participate in teams, creating meaningful relationships built upon collaboration, trust, and their shared experiences of their victories and their defeats. In the month of October, the Highlands community is excited with the start of the annual White Plains Middle School Fred Gressler Walkathon fundraising campaign, dedicated to Fred Gressler, a gym teacher who widely promoted wellness and physical fitness. Students are encouraged to ask for donations to raise money for the PTA for the whole month of October. Through an online platform, all students, as well as their school teams, have their own pages to share with friends and family in order to raise for this event. Students will walk the track on October 31st or Halloween, and prizes will also be awarded to those with the best participation and most donations, as well as those who show school spirit, sportsmanship, and the best costumes. There are also exciting updates from Rochambeau, where many school activities have started once again. The Rochambeau Robotics Team has begun their meetings. The Disproportionality Team continues to work with BOSI's to explore restorative means of addressing student misbehavior, and the Innovative Designs for Education Corporation continues to partner with teachers and administration. Additionally, there's been many efforts encouraging community building. For example, Ice Cream Social and the Youth Bureau has joined Rochambeau for Community Wednesday, and since changing the time from 8:30 a.m. to 12:15 p.m., family time has resumed after years of being underutilized due to morning student attendance. Family time allows for a 12-minute advisory period to provide social, emotional, and case management support. Further, Rochambeau Preschool has partnered with the Family Services of Westchester, where students can volunteer with preschool students who attend the programming on the lower level of the school's building. Together, they participate in activities such as reading, art, and playing. Currently, one Rochambeau student actively takes part by altering his schedule to include study hall and lunchtime to engage with the preschoolers. At White Plains High School, the first-ever Tiger Community Time for this school year was a huge success. The club fair prompted many students to join new clubs and become more active in school affairs. Additionally, freshman seminars with Teams Tiger and Dubset has allowed freshman students to familiarize themselves with their guidance counselors, who will continue to support them throughout all four years of their high school career. Some other exciting events were the visit of New York State Chancellor of the Board of Regents, Lester Young, coming to White Plains High School through the Educator Pathway Program for Teaching, and the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month during all lunch periods on October 11th, where clubs such as Latino Coalition, Songwriters, Mariachi, and Jazz Band, as well as special features from students of, from Mr. Polanco's creative writing class, came together to celebrate. Further, this week is Spirit Week, containing themes such as Jersey Day, Color Wars, Throwback Thursday, and Pinkout, to motivate school spirit and also pay tribute to breast cancer awareness. At the end of the school week, there will be a pep rally featuring games, music, and more for all to attend after school. And later that evening, there will be the homecoming football game that many are looking forward to. Lastly, the Athletics Department has seen successful results from the third-ever Summer Academy that took place five weeks over the summer, incorporating speed training, strength training, and academics. The academic portion consisted of SAT and ACT preparation, but also nutrition and physiology classes run by Mr. Kreno. Students were able to take part in learning the science behind muscle growth, cardiovascular fitness flexes, and more, doing experiments that can help to apply the concepts and create deeper understanding of how it works in the bodies of athletes. During the school year and the fall season alone, there have been 633 students registered for high school sports. In total, there are 16 varsity and junior varsity teams in the high school and nine modified teams in the middle school. Thankfully, the weather has been very cooperative with the schedules, allowing all teams to play the maximum number of games expected. Currently, most varsity teams are starting to wrap up this season on the week of the 21st and prepare for playoffs. To highlight some student achievements, senior Lily Demadas has been seeded number one as the highest-ranking tennis player in the tennis section for girls. The Athletics Department and the athletes are looking forward to seeing all the Fall Scholar athletes and emphasize the importance of education-based athletics, ensuring that athletes are meeting their goals of being hard-working students before being winners. And on that note, this concludes the updates within our White Plains City School District schools. Thank you.
Really good.
Thank you so much. Really great update. You took most of my report. But thank you so much. A lot of amazing things happening, um, and, and so great to celebrate. And just so the, the public is aware, um, with our, our, our Board of Education ex officio members, um, it is both an opportunity to engage from the dais, um, with, with, of course, the community, the Board of Education, and also to learn a little bit, um, about sort of the process and, and all the protocols and, and expectations of being board members. And so that you know, we meet for about an hour before every board meeting, review the agenda, um, and go through sort of experiences that, that trustees have gone through over the years, and they also meet with, um, a selection of trustees at that time as well as me. So it's been great so far. It's wonderful having you as part of the team, and, uh, I know you have to leave now. So thanks so much for, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you.
And if it's okay, I'll continue with Super Ten's report. Great, thank you so much. Um, ju, just, uh, just a couple of, well, several, several updates, but I won't, I won't necessarily recap what, what our students have already shared, but I do want to just draw attention and some reminders as well for the Board of Education. First, again, Happy School Board Recognition Week. Thank you very much to not only the White Plains City School District Board, but all Boards of Education everywhere, um, for the voluntary service and work that they do in support of students and families. It is so important, um, and certainly in, in the White Plains City School District, we're really blessed with, uh, with folks who are engaged at every level in the organization, not just at board meetings. So thank you for all of that. Um, again, also very excited to have our students showcasing, um, work that is taking place here in the White Plains City School District, Ralt State and SEED. Um, so we're looking forward to that at NSBA next week, and, and, uh, no doubt, it will be a great experience for many other board members to see how student voice can not only be integrated, but elevated in the conversations related to, to what's happening in schools, but also what's happening in the world, and how is that affecting or impacting me as a student, um, and my community? And, um, hard conversation, not easy conversations, uh, complex, messy, uh, but done with class, understanding, compassion, open minds. Uh, it is a thing to see and to be part of, and anybody who has been part of, of the SEED meetings, which I know all of you have, um, really tremendous and, and replicable. So it can be brought to other school districts, which is really exciting as well. A lot of celebrations and a lot to celebrate. Um, everybody who's, who's observed holiday over the weekend, hope, hope you had a, a meaningful and peaceful holiday. Um, we have a lot of holidays coming up, and as our students just mentioned, even this week, celebrations like Unity Day, something that is very, very important to all of us here in the White Plains City School District, um, demonstrating our, our commitment and recommitment to a community that is as unique as its individual members, and that everybody has not just a place, again, but a meaningful place in our community, but also demonstrating and showing our students how we can model for them and how we can make sure that if there's somebody in our community who feels like they're not engaged, not connected, that there are ways to, to be able to create and form those meaningful connections. Um, and, and I want to thank the PTA, I want to thank all of our building-level, uh, teams and, and everybody for, for working to elevate Unity Day. I think Unity Day, if I'm not mistaken, right, Mrs. Algar, would, this is something that People Services, that, that Special Education has been pioneering for years and years and years. It is. It's great, and I'm very excited, as well as excited for the pep rally. Um, and we also have coming up with our, our, our community partners, El Centro Spano, where we're gonna celebrate 50 years of, of service to the community as well, um, in just two weeks, right? Yep. And I must share, um, and eternally grateful, of course, for El Centro, amazing partners. Last month, uh, we had a community member who, who came to the board meeting, expressed concern related to a polling site in Battleville. In conversations with, with, uh, the leadership team, uh, at both City Hall and, and throughout the city, um, El Centro is the polling site for the general election in that part of town. And, um, you know, the, the idea was brought, well, could it be also used for the school board's election as well? And thereby restoring that access point, um, that our, our community member had brought to, to our attention. And just so grateful for El Centro, opening their doors and willing to do that, uh, for the May election as well. So really, really happy in that, that, you know, again, an example of in, interacting with, uh, with, uh, with the community and trying to solve a problem together. Um, so happy to share that good news, good news with you. And also, I'm very, very happy and grateful to share that the, uh, we've been awarded, White Plains High School's been awarded, um, the, the Business Council Westchester Win Award for Innovation again, second year in a row for entrepreneurship, and, um, again, big thanks to, to, uh, Mr. Verulo, the team, and all of our students who are innovating and creating, um, and, and this is, uh, again, just a, a nice recognition for them and all of that work, and, um, those projects will be coming online soon, so you'll be getting those invitations. I also want to thank, um, the New York State Board of Regents Chancellor, Vice Chancellor, uh, for, for visiting with us, also Regent Fran Wills. The President of NICE, uh, NICE at Melinda Person was here as well, all visiting the Educator Pathway, which, thanks to so many folks here at, at White Plains High School, including Mr. Martinez, Sarah Hall, um, and, and really so, so many people. Um, this is a, a program that is growing. The interest level is growing. Ms. Simmons, uh, I mean, you visit her class once, you know why. It's a, it's, it's a fantastic learning environment, a great opportunity for our students, um, and we're really excited about it as we seek to grow, um, a pathway for, for potential future educators right here at White Plains High School, for students to be engaged almost immediately upon graduation with the school district, and hopefully we'll be able to hire them right back, um, because it, it, there's, I think, no, no greater testament, uh, to than having teachers who are also former students.
And this is earning college credit while they're here.
Yes, sir. Yep. Uh, really great, and, and we're so happy to showcase it, um, and give that opportunity for folks who are interested in, in learning more about the, the program. Just a reminder, coming up, uh, Election Day, um, is, is right around the corner, um, and for, for us, it's in service. We have the Youth Bureau Annual Conference, uh, that we were invited to participate in. It's gonna be taking place here in the city of White Plains. Um, I'm honored to be able to participate, uh, as a community partner with Mayor Roach, as well as Mr. Williams, to share some of the types of programs that we offer for our students here in White Plains that other youth bureaus throughout the state of New York might be able to integrate and employ, um, for their communities as well. I don't have an update on, um, on the proposed legislation related to cell phones yet. Uh, as soon as I do, I'll, I'll be sure to share that. I do have to encourage, if you haven't yet, to please join the PTA. Um, our PTAs are winning recognition at all of our schools, whether it be for, you know, hitting, hitting benchmarks early, or the, the number of participants. Um, really, the White Plains City School District PTA engagement level is outstanding, um, and the more folks who are able to participate, at whatever level that is, um, it, it's a great benefit to our students. So if you haven't yet, there is still time, always time, to join the PTA, and I know that they would be very, very happy to welcome. Uh, we have a number of, of colleagues who are on this evening's agenda. Um, three who are being recommended for tenure. We have, uh, Ms. Burnett, art teacher at MAS. Ms. Servali, uh, Post-Road Elementary Education. And Ms. Diana Soraka, a, a teaching assistant, also at Post-Road is on, uh, this evening's agenda as well. Ms. Laura Cilio. Ms. Laura Cilio is on the agenda this evening for potential, it's almost, it's almost, it's almost here, appointment as interim House Administrator. Congratulations. And there are going to be a lot of activities coming up in the next couple of weeks related to Halloween, the trunk or treats and everything. And, you know, let's do everything we can to keep everybody safe. That is like my greatest wish. Have fun. Do all the things, but also let's keep our children as safe as we possibly can. And that also starts with talking with them about if they are going to participate in those types of festivities like trick-or-treating and such, just talking with them and making sure we're taking all of the steps to keep each other safe. And we will remind, we do the annual reminders at school as well. But for my part, and I know the Board of Education's part, we want everyone to have a happy and also safe Halloween holiday. And take advantage of those trunk-or-treat type opportunities where students can gather together and celebrate in a more controlled and controlled environment. There's a great one that always takes place here at the high school. The costumes are tremendous when you come, I know. Charlie, are you going to be scaring people this year running around? You never know. You never know. I do want to give the Board of Education, and of course, you've had the opportunity to view the PTA meeting that took place last week at Church Street. And I was really thankful, grateful for the PTA for welcoming me and Dr. Karate Shan to be able to talk with the Church Street School community following last week, last month's Board of Education meeting where we discussed the possibility of realigning or aligning the elementary school start times. Grateful for the opportunity. We had tremendous participation. I think at one point, I saw 133 or so people on the Zoom. A lot of really excellent feedback, some of which was just related to the overall meeting itself. And I do appreciate the constructive criticism that folks had offered us. We employed it immediately in making sure, you know, translated versions of our PowerPoints and such were available to the public. They're all posted on the district's website right now. But we received a lot of feedback. Here's what we knew going in. Any discussion about a potential change to the beginning of a school day, and in this instance, we're talking about a significant change, 30 minutes, in aligning in Church Street, of course, starts earlier, in aligning the school, is something that is going to bring a lot of concern. And, you know, we had talked about this previously. Definitely understandable. And so that concern was expressed in a variety of ways. Folks asked a lot of really excellent questions related to how and why and what are we, why are we even considering this right now? And we shared the information with the community members related to not only the efficiency study, which was conducted on the overall transportation department, but also in the process leading up to the awarding of the transportation contract and bid. We did our, we did our best and we can probably do better moving forward and continuing the conversation with folks and answering lingering questions that may still exist. As an example, we shared that in the new contract with the transportation company, while we did predict a 30 to 40% increase in the overall cost of transportation as we were coming back into the market, it was even higher. It was closer to 50%. That's not something that, of course, we can control. And when we received those numbers, we looked for every possible way to try to get as much service out of the new contract as we possibly could. So in that contract, you have all new vehicles. In that contract, you have access to all the technology and equipment that helped to make today's buses, school buses, as safe and secure as possible. All of those things, yes, it's all part of the contract. The challenge is in the way our construct is right now. As we almost have, it's really like, we have two tiers, but we have 13 standalone buses that operate for the Church Street School Elementary start time, which is not aligned to the other four schools. To maintain that structure, the structure we have right now, would cost about another $2 million on top of what the cost of the transportation contract is. If you're thinking about that and you're thinking about how that change could impact your day, it's not a question, right? And so we understand that. And we heard and we continue to hear from all, all folks about how this may impact them negatively. And we have to consider how that cost impacts our families and how it could potentially impact the sustainability and overall operational efficiency of the transportation department now and into the future. It's also, and we shared this, really important to note that this is not a $2 million savings. It's not a $2 million savings. The question is, do we, do we seek to expend $2 million more dollars to keep the construct what it is today into the future? How would you do that? You would do it by redirecting resources that presently exist somewhere in the organization or by levying additional taxes or a combination there. Those are really it. Those are the two ways. So what we're doing right now is we're engaging in collecting feedback from parents or guardians in both a qualitative and quantitative format. We have a very sort of succinct, I think it's pretty succinct, feedback survey that has gone out, will continue to go out weekly for about a month, to collect as much information from Church Street Elementary families as they're willing to give. And we purposefully put narrative opportunity in because we believe that at the heart of this conversation for many families is individual circumstances and situations. And the more information that we can gather from our parents and guardians about their individual circumstances, the better we might be able to intervene and assist in a novel way. As an example, thinking about making sure we're working directly with community partners to expand for a more robust before care and after care opportunity for parents and guardians who are interested in that, not just at Church Street Elementary, at all of the elementary schools. And also other ideas, how we might be able to support individual families. It's not welcome news. And I'll tell you, it wasn't, it wasn't news that we were happy to share. And at the same time, we are absolutely committed to hearing from everybody who wants to tell us about their individual experience. And one of the things that we've learned by talking with folks is that it really is highly individual. Have we heard from folks who told us that a change is a welcome experience for them? Yeah, we have. Have we heard from folks who told us that we should realign all of the other elementary schools to match Church Street? We have. We've heard all different types of feedback and recommendations. And it's all valid. It's all valid because it's all what people are experiencing, what they're concerned about. So we are going to continue this process of information gathering. We are going to bring all of that information, again, back to the Board of Education for you to review as well. And we'll continue to share all of that. And we'll continue to communicate as often as possible and necessary with the Church Street School community. But we know that we're a year out. But folks need to know. And so, you know, the idea here is to gather as much information as we possibly can to make the best possible decision that we can to serve the Church Street Elementary School community and all of the White Plains City School District moving forward. I will continue, I will give you, of course, another update and update to the community at our next meeting as well. Do you have any questions?
In terms of timeline?
Yeah. Yep. So the question was related to the timeline. So in terms of the timeline, thank you for that, by the way. We've committed at least 30 days to collect feedback through the feedback form. People are welcome to, and they have, share feedback however they're most comfortable doing it. Phone call, email, meeting, whatever makes them comfortable. Then we need to synthesize that as quickly as possible and get that information to the Board of Education. We are trying to, we are trying to come to a conclusion within the next 60, I would say 60 to 90 days at most. We need to make sure we know if there's going to be a change in the start time for the enrollment process, the controlled parent choice selection process. And we just need to make sure that we're giving people as much forewarning as possible for any type of a shift. Concurrently, we're working now to bolster before care and after care and also to look for ways to be able to support for the costs of before care and after care. Because that's another component that we heard loud and clear, and we all know, even if it's a dollar that you weren't planning on spending on childcare, it's a lot of money. And so everybody's circumstances are different. Everyone's circumstances are unique. But we all know that if we can provide stability and information early, that's the best case, that's the best case scenario. Folks had asked, you know, is this already a done deal? Is it already a done decision? Absolutely not. And please, please don't view it that way. Please share and fill out, you know, the feedback survey and give us as much information as you're able to do. And we'll make sure that we communicate back and get everybody an update as quickly as possible. That's, oh, yes. I'm sorry. And that, that does, that concludes my lengthy update.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ricker. We're going to move into the public, the public participation portion of our meeting. So the board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with an individual limit of three minutes per person. The session limit will be 25 minutes. As always, Dr. Ricker and the cabinet will be happy to meet anytime to discuss concerns after this meeting. Although...
Just may I just say, not necessarily tonight.
I mean, not tonight, but...
Just, I'm being...
Sorry, sorry. I know. I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
They will be happy to meet with you anytime to discuss concerns after tonight. Although the Board of Education does not directly respond to specific comments or any comments or concerns during our business meeting, we want to emphasize that we do hear you. We hear you. And please don't interpret that we don't respond right now, that we don't hear you. We hear you. Please be assured that we will be in constant consult with Dr. Ricker to get updates, to see how the surveys are going, or anything else of concern on any issue. And with that, if we have any public participation, we would ask that you come to the podium and state your name and address. Do we have any public participation?
Thank you, President Eller. I'd just like to offer one for public participation as well. We're live streamed. We're recorded. And so I always just like to remind folks, if you're going to share any personal details related to your family situation, that it becomes largely amplified in public. So I just share that because you can always feel free to share those more personal details with me, if you like, in a less public setting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Sasha Groick. I live at 42 Rich Bell Road. Before I begin, I just want to give a positive shout out to Ms. Burnett. She's an amazing art teacher. She also works at Ridgeway. And she's had my class for the past two years. And wow, you're amazing. I'm so glad you got tenure. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. But I saw Mr. Norris at a back-to-school event. And I said, you know, I kind of want to use my three minutes, but I'm so a little scared. He's like, no, you should. Come speak. You know, we want to hear from you. So thank you so much. I am an extremely proud member of the White Plains Community School District. I teach fourth grade at Ridgeway. And my two sons attend Church Street School. I believe with all of my heart that the White Plains Community School District is a model for what progressive and equitable public education should look like across our nation. I truly believe that. Allowing parents to visit each school before their child enters kindergarten builds community and trust. Purposely creating classes that are diverse and filled with kids from across our city, no matter their ZIP code, strengthens that sense of community. And I just want to remind everyone that we are doing amazing work every day, providing students with enriching and differentiated curriculum where their social, emotional well-being is always taken into consideration. And my pride and respect for our district and its families, and most importantly, its students, is why I'm here to speak today. I feel that recently, many decisions have been made that actually have a negative impact on students and teachers. Over the summer, we found out that students would no longer be bused between schools, leaving many teachers without ways to cover childcare. I believe this decision does not really build up our sense of community in the district. It somewhat deteriorates it. More devastatingly, teachers were told that their children could no longer attend our schools unless they're already enrolled, sending the message that we don't necessarily value their dedication to our district, and it does also make their lives a bit more complicated. Again, this also does not attract talent to our district when hiring, as most Westchester school districts allow teachers to bring their own children into the district. And just recently, as Dr. Ricker was saying, Church Street families found out of the possibility of a schedule change. And we know that individuals make up a community. And the majority of families that I've spoken to at Church Street do not support this. So many families choose Church Street School not just for its excellent leadership, its programs, and its amazing teaching staff, but also for the earlier start time, which allows commuters and teachers like myself to get their kids on the bus to school and still get to their job on time. My understanding is that the change is heavily proposed, as you said, for financial reasons. And ultimately, as we've noted, the financial burden then will transfer to parents and caregivers that are White Plains taxpayers. As a board, when you consider making these decisions, I want to just remind you, it does have a direct impact on our community. And I hope that the decisions are not made just to save money, but to uplift our community by truly supporting one another and sending the message that we value our teachers and our families, and most importantly, our students. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Krista Williams, 109 North Broadway. I am the mother of three children that attend Church Street School. Church Street's offering an early start time has been such a benefit to our family, as both my husband and I are educators. A lot of Church Street families have educators that chose Church Street for that reason. So we can safely get our kids off to schools while we go to our own. And this change is going to dramatically impact our household as well as others. In addition to this, we've also had to manage finding other places for after-school because the youth bureaus understaffed, which has already been a financial burden for a lot of our Church Street families to begin with. So now we're adding before care, which offsets our children's schedules completely because they need to be there about 7:30, 7:40. So you're leaving your home. You're going across town. You're doing all of that before, and the kids get on a bus to go right back to where they started, basically. So we need to think about the kids, too. And the buses situation, I understand, is difficult. More kids on buses with no monitors might not be the best at that point. The family survey shared by the district does not capture the quantitative data to identify families that are in favor of the change and families that are not in favor of the change. All of the questions ask for narrative responses rather than the inclusion of a question that concretely asks yes or no. We need to see what our population wants. Do they want this or do they not want this? And go from there.
Thank you.
I live at 175 Trenton Avenue. I'm going to say a lot of what was already said, but I think it's worth saying again. I want to first off say that my daughter's seven years old. She attends Church Street. I have a three-year-old daughter who will likely not attend Church Street if this goes through because this is why I chose Church Street. I'm a working mother. My husband works off hours and in order for me to get to work, I need to be able to get my daughter earlier, which is what many of the parents at Church Street have to do. We have four other schools that operate at the other times. As Dr. Ricker said, he has some people who agree with this change, then may I suggest they go to one of the other four schools. We need to have this opportunity or we will not be able to work. I also think that you're not thinking about the financial implications as they should be. Over 61% of the population are economically disadvantaged. Although it's been said that the alleged additional before-school programming will be at a much lesser rate than what is standard, that is not true for our families. If you make $300,000 plus a year, I can see why it's not a big deal. We have many families who are making about a quarter of that, if that. So I ask you to think about the families and not your own situations. Further, when I told my daughter, because I have a very transparent relationship with her, you might have to do before care, she started to cry because it's less time she can now be at home. She also enjoys taking the bus, which she won't be able to do anymore. You're breaking kids' hearts. You're causing stress at home. And I also ask, how do we get in touch with you? I emailed. No one on the board responded. Is this how this works? I realize you can't respond, but I'm confused about the dynamics and who you're working for because right now I don't feel supported by the Board of Education. Further, and lastly, I will reiterate what Krista said, the tool that was sent out is not a strong evaluative tool. Quantitative data is what you need to know. I don't need you sitting down assessing our stories, deciding if it's sad enough for you. Ask yes or no. That is the only question. If I say yes, that's all that matters. Thank you.
Julius Donison, 4 Midchester Avenue here in White Plains. My son is a kindergartner at Post Road School. No, joking. He goes to Church Street. I also have a three-year-old who hopefully will go to Church Street. I want to start by saying my wife and I are both teachers and we chose White Plains because of the schools and we chose Church Street because of its start time. We would not have chosen Church Street if we had known this was on the table. So certainly moving to a later start time will be an inconvenience. I'm not here to share my specific story. I'll fill out the survey. I've been a teacher for almost 20 years and I just want to add to this conversation that we can problem solve and we can figure out the puzzle, but add to this conversation that I know that students learn best when there are consistent structures and routines. We do our best every morning to make sure our children are well-regulated and ready to learn when we turn them over to you. And so I can solve the puzzle of before care, but please understand that you're asking me to give up control. We're introducing uncertainty and this uncertainty plays out with more days where my son is less focused and his teacher has to work harder. We've all had those mornings where something goes wrong and we feel stressed and it's harder to get things done. And I want you to take that feeling and multiply it across many children at Church Street. So I have a request, not a demand. I've heard the promise to communicate, so please genuinely communicate, communicate early and communicate often. The first time I heard about this proposed change was on Facebook a few weeks ago and not from the district. And I just have to say that was really disappointing. Figuring out childcare takes time and so this is a big ask. I think you realize it's a big ask, so really do please communicate early and often so we can figure out how to send our children to school ready to learn and their very best next September. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Sure. So hi, everyone.
I'm Nicole Myers. I live at 29 Ogden Avenue. I am the proud mother of a second grader at Church Street and a two-year-old who in the future will be Church Street champion. I have heard everyone here talk about how it affects their families and I agree. And I've heard everyone here talk about the mental well-being of the children and that to me is a huge concern. You mentioned often that the very first question a child should have is how are you? Before, how is your, where's your homework? And this change in start time goes far beyond just the need for before-school care and the need for after-school care. As the previous speaker spoke about, routines are in order. But we've also spoken about how going to before care at a different home or building creates another transition for a child, thereby affecting their mental well-being. We can talk about how the cost of before care affects a family. That's 61% of our population. That money that's being spent on groceries, on clothing, on school supplies is now being reallocated for a cost that was not planned when families chose Church Street, when families put down that they needed that earlier start time. We've not talked about how middle schoolers or high schoolers can be affected, how they may have to get jobs to pay for that before care for their younger siblings. We've not talked about how parents may have to alter their work schedules or lose their jobs and how that affects the mental well-being of not only our Church Street students, but our middle school and our high school students. Along those same lines, you said that this early start time started and was brought into consideration for working families. That need has not changed and it will not change. I understand that this is taken into consideration for a $2 million outlook, but the way it is being communicated and presented is that $2 million is coming at the expense of Church Street families financially and mentally. So I very much urge, and I did take a lot of time to look at the proposal, I urge the board to look again at the proposal, look at the efficiencies. Church Street School is the third highest ridership of the buses in our district, whereas the high school is at 50% ridership. I urge the board to take into consideration that maybe there is a different way to balance Tier One and Tier Two that doesn't drastically affect the Church Street families. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Unless there's any more public participation, this session is concluded. Again, we hear you and Dr. Ricker and the superintendent and all of us will be in touch and in consult. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can we, can we just move on then? Can we say anything? Just, it was, there was a question about how you can reach us and all of our emails are on the page. I have not received an email from anyone personally on this, so...
I didn't receive anything either.
There's no forward email. Mr. Who?
Who?
You.
Okay. Yeah. So like Valerie Daniele at WP blah, 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 goes directly to me. All of our names, it's just our names and the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We couldn't hear what you said. Get your email back.
All right, next. So next, next we're going to move into our summary action items. We have summary action items, four through eight. May I have a motion?
Second.
Do you have a motion?
I do.
Yes. I do.
I'd like to draw your attention to item 4B, very, very generous donations. And every year, the Elks present every one of our third-grade students with gazetteer and dictionary. Kids love it. They absolutely love it. So thanks again to Mr. Robert Lent on behalf of the Elks. This year, 488 students received their student dictionary and animal gazetteer. We also have one full-size violin and keyboard from Michael and Jenna Liebich, one violin for George Washington School from Mr. Marcelino and Mrs. Marina Castro, two violins for the music program at George Washington School from Linda Washington, one 3D printer for the STEAM projects at George Washington Elementary School from Amelia Delfino, and 60 pairs of noise-canceling headphones to Ridgway classrooms from the Ridgway PTA. Thank you very, very much to our generous donors. Absolutely.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to individual action items. Okay, I'm sorry.
This is the exciting part, Ms. Lewis.
Okay. The individual action...
Could be naughty.
Our first individual action item involves a revision to policy 5152, admission of non...
Non-resident students, this is, may I? Is it okay? Right, because, and there was a mention of this this evening in the board, and the board is aware, but so for the community as well. We did talk about potentially limiting new students coming into the school district for employees over the summer. We reconsidered that, as you know. That didn't go into force and effect. Yes. Also, this policy helps to really clarify that and also it created a longer timeline for our colleagues so that there wasn't that short turnaround time if it ever did become necessary not to be able to welcome students from outside of the school district who are also tuition-free. And we may come back again with some minor language adjustments. We're still looking at it, but the dates are what's really important. So thank you for that opportunity and for the clarification. Yes.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we move on to the special, the special education district plan for 2024 through 2027. May I have a motion? And this, this is just, this is the document that we received as part of our backup to just give an outlook through 2027 for what the plans are for our pupil services in terms of what we need to do, what we intend to do, and projections on enrollment. Are there any questions? Anything else anyone wants to add to that? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended, the recommended approval or acceptance of the external auditor's annual financial statement, extra classroom activities funds, financial statement, management letter, and corrective action plan for the year ended June 2024. And this is what we heard earlier. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Are there any other questions? Again, thank you, Dr. Becaro, Teich, and your team for really putting together an audit that nothing could be fact wrong in. We thank you. We know it's difficult to do for such a large district. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended, the recommended approval or acceptance of the external auditor's annual financial statement, extra classroom activities funds, financial statement, management letter, and corrective action plan for the year ended June 2024. And this is what we heard earlier. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Are there any other questions? Again, thank you, Dr. Becaro, Teich, and your team for really putting together an audit that nothing could be fact wrong in. We thank you. We know it's difficult to do for such a large district. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the budget calendar. May I have a motion to accept the budget development calendar for the 2025-2026 school year? And this is the calendar as we begin to prepare our budget for the next school year in terms of meetings and where to locate important information to educate ourselves on what our budget entails, but most importantly, when we're going to have our meetings so that if you want, you can attend. And of course, you can always contact the Board of Ed, Dr. Ricker, Dr. Becaro, Teich, if you have any questions on the budget.
These are additional meetings in addition to the monthly board meetings.
Yes.
Yes. Lots of...
Yes.
I'm a...
We welcome and encourage...
Yes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, something else we also heard, we heard about earlier, the recommended action is the acceptance of the update and readoption of the district-wide safety and emergency management plan for the 2024-2025 school year. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I'm just grateful we are not running a full drill, which is the teachers, kids, police.
Terrible idea.
Thank you for that.
That's hard. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, next, the revision of a probationary period for an administrator, the recommended approval of the revision of the probationary period end date for Meredith Lee, Assistant Principal, Church, Church Street School from August 21st, 2026 through 10, 13, 2026. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the interim appointment of an administrator. The action is recommended approval of the appointment of Laura Cilio, interim house administrator of the high school effective October 16, 2024 through June 30th, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions?
Congrats.
I almost did, too. I almost started that part.
You notice I didn't?
Do you want to say anything?
I just wanted to thank the Board of Education. I also like to thank the search committee, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Pepper, and all, everyone who participated in that process. And I'd like to thank you. Sorry, Ms....
I'd like to thank you for your willingness to move into a new role professionally. I think your background and your dedication to our students and ability, your background and your work of leading first, I think, hopefully will help. I'm looking forward to seeing you. You'll be a great, wonderful team and can also bring recommendations to a lot of us on how we can continue to improve our service to our students. So hopefully, we can hope for that.
Just so everyone, you know, we've all, we've all met and had opportunity to talk as well. But anyhow, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to just quickly say anything?
I was not prepared for this. But I just want to say thank you to Mr. Martinez and the entire administrative team and all of the very hard-working staff at the high school who support our students. Every day I get to see them. Every day we're working really, really hard to make our students feel welcomed and supported and appreciate learning and their varying styles. So I want to thank all of them primarily. And I also want to thank the board for making me feel so wonderfully warm and welcomed in this new role. And I also want to thank the board for making me feel so wonderfully warm and welcomed in this new role. I very much look forward to being accessible to more students and being more supportive to the community at the school, but also the community at large. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and the last item on our individual action item is the recommended approval of the request for an extension per CSCA contract of the unpaid, of the paid period of absence beyond 30 days due to an accident in the line of duty for two employees, 32867324. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? We discussed this. All in favor?
Aye.
Could I please ask my colleagues in the back to stand and be recognized again this evening? Congratulations. And of course, you get a double because we're going to do this again in May too, which is really exciting. Congratulations.
Okay, next we're on to board discussion on our committee reports.
Friends, go home. Get some sleep. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay, so next we're on to board discussion for our committee reports. So I will say that we did meet, HR did meet, congratulations again. HR did meet, we can't discuss it in this private room, in this huge crowded room. And for the finance committee, the bulk of our conversation was on the audited report that was reviewed earlier.
And curriculum did not meet, I think we're up.
You're due.
October 29th or something like that. I thought we did.
Then neither do I.
No, I was there, I was there. The big guy was there.
And we saw that station, we talked about the high school traffic pattern and we need to change it. We talked about some allergies, all of the curriculums, some of the facilities operations. And obviously, two other things. Because I'm on the board, I just talked to the person, which is made recommendations about what regulation measures should look like. Several workshops where they solicited to put some educators and classes up. So I was able to keep on the surface, and that's in the draft. And then the district's district department and ultimately the board of commissioners makes a decision about what the government's planning for regulations and what their staffing will look like. And I also complimented the new city leadership representative. And there are two initiatives that I think are upsets. One is a modular governance leadership program, which is going to focus on community and board relationships. Also for officers, they did a private program of passengers and they're holding that out to the entire state. And that's freedom. And also there's a purpose now, um, for people to remember to walk, so more of the... And I think we already touched base on the finance committee earlier, do you need to add?
Special Ed met and we had a conversation just about the status of the independent review of the special ed and looking forward to getting the results.
Any other reporter? Okay. So, yeah. May I have, thank you, John, John Shepherd-Wave? Are you alone, are you alone back there? Thank you, John, we appreciate you. Thank you guys for attending and... May I have a motion to go into an exec session to discuss personnel matters involving... All in favor? Thank you, everyone. No action, okay, thank you.